I'll call this meeting to order. If we would, I'd like to have an invocation as we always have by your heads. Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, all council people are in attendance this evening, so we won't go through that formally. Approval of minutes for the city council meeting of January 4th would be in order. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
What's been made and supported, is there any discussion on those minutes? Be not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. We'd ask that you would state your name and your address for the record. Is there anybody in the audience this evening?
It's still just Jim Guttlinger and I.
Okay, thank you. Let me know if somebody does come on. I will.
I will.
I won't go to the audience if there's nobody here. Okay, audience comments, moving on to adoption of agenda. Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? A motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion? Be not, all in favor say aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
What's been made and supported, there's no discussion on that motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration this evening, we have six. The first one being consideration of approval of resolution number 2021-2, which is the adoption of City of Richmond Recreation Master Plan. Mr. City Manager?
Council is being asked to consider adopting resolution 2021-2, a resolution adopting the 2021 through 2026 City of Richmond Recreation Master Plan. Previously, council were given drafts of the plan with time for you to review them. Since that time, the Recreation Board has held a public hearing and adopted their resolution 2021-1, which approved their Recreation Master Plan and recommended that council do the same. During the Recreation Board's review of the plan, the only thing that we changed since the draft that I handed out to the council is that instead of it being the 2020 through 2025 plan, we've changed that to 2021 through 2026. Administration, as we go through and correct all the strike-throughs and remove the yellow highlighting in the draft, we will also update that date throughout the plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-2, a resolution adopting the 2021 through 2026 City of Richmond Recreation Master Plan.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion? I'd just like to say what a great job the Rec Board did on this, along with the administration. It was a long time coming, and now that it is done, I think it's done right. It's very, been very thoroughly gone through. And I believe it includes a lot of good things that our community has let us know that they'd like to see happen in the future. And it's something that hopefully we can start looking at that during budget time to see what it is that we can do as we can afford to take care of some of those plans that are in there. But I think it's a great document. Appreciate all the hard work by the Board and the administration on this.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I know we've all been waiting to vote on this. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of the purchase of a brush chipper. Mr. City Manager?
The fiscal year 2020-21 budget includes $49,000 for the purchase of a brush chipper and a new dump box for the 2004 Ford F-350 truck. This item number two is the purchase of the brush chipper. Item number three is the purchase of the dump box and the chipper cap. So with that, Jim and DPW have done a very thorough job demoing various units of the brush chipper. And so we have the bids in front of you. The low bid being from Bandit Industries. And staff recommendation is that you authorize the purchase of the Bandit 12 XPC brush chipper from Bandit Industries.
Thank you.
And Jim Slinger is here if you have any technical questions on the equipment.
Okay, Jim, did you have anything to add to this before we make a motion?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to authorize $28,727.04 for a purchase of the Bandit 12 XP from Bandit Industries with expenses charged to appropriate line items, DPW Equipment Fund.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on this?
Obviously, you tried to check them all out. It looks like it'll do up to 12-inch logs. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we did, of course, demo this specific model, and it did a very good job on, from grapevines all the way up to very close to 12 inches, we ran through there. So it worked well.
Great. And that is a, we're piggyback on the state's bid. Is that what we're doing here? Is this one of the items that we are getting on the state?
Well, the Bandit is approved through my deal, but we did get quotes from multiple vendors kind of in addition to that.
Okay, okay. Okay, anything else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carries. Item number three is consideration of the purchase of a dump box slash chipper cap. Mr. City Manager?
With the purchase of the chipper, just at the last item, that leaves us with roughly $20,273 for the purchase of a new dump box for the Ford F-350 pickup truck that we have, or small dump that we have, along with the chipper cap. Jim, again, has received quotes on all of the dump boxes. The low bid is from Naphide for the Henderson Mark III Dump Box. And then in the chipper cap, again, we received multiple quotes for the chipper cap. The one that we're recommending that we go with is the low bid on the chipper cap from Bell Equipment for the Titan Steel Cap. But we're recommending going with kind of the modified one, which is the chipper cap slash leaf cap as council requested. Administration do when we authorize this in the budget. We looked to make sure that we purchased a chipper cap that has the functionality of being able to be both for chipping or for leaf vac, should we determine in the future that we want to do leaf pickup. Simply purchasing this does not commit us to doing the leaf pickup, but it just allows us to have that flexibility in the future.
Thank you. Is Jim anything to add to this?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion before any further discussion? Anybody?
I'll make a motion for the purchase of a Henderson dump body from Naphide Truck Equipment and Titan Leaf Cap from Bell Equipment with the expense charged to appropriate line items, DPW Equipment Replacement Fund and Tifa Fund.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion?
I forgot when I was doing my discussion on the item. In the past, our taxing our finance authority has indicated that they would be willing to participate in leaf equipment costs. And so administration is recommending that we take the difference between the regular chipper cap and the chipper slash leaf cap and request that Tifa pay for that difference.
Very good. And Tifa members, which we have a couple here, you guys, this is a direction somewhat that you guys have talked about for a number of years, getting into the leaf pickup business possibly?
Yeah, yeah. Tiff was in support of the buying a leaf vac truck in the past, so.
Yeah.
This is the first I've heard of this part of this option tonight when I saw the package this week. So Tiff hasn't talked about none of this part yet, but I don't see it being an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
Well, I look at it, it's phase one, Rob. I'm not sure if administration agrees with that right at the moment, but yeah, it's a bigger conversation, I believe, down the line.
Did we put the dollar amount in the motion?
It wasn't in there.
Yeah, sorry, the dollar amounts weren't in the motion. It would be $13,148 for the dump box and $7,300 for the chipper leaf cap.
Good catch there, Jamie.
I'm okay with adding that in.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, it looks like the difference between the chipper cap and the leaf cap is only, looks like about $400 and some dollars, so you're not looking at a major expense there.
Yeah, yep.
No.
$2,500.
Twenty-five.
But, uh, is it a 68?
It's between $4,800 and $7,300. We're only like $400 over budget. That's what you're looking at, I think.
Okay, alright, that's what I was looking at, sorry.
Yep.
My little question is, and I'm not nitpicking this or nothing, but with the total amount for the chipper and then the box and the cap, we're, they're around $48,000. I mean, we got that big a need for the tree chipper and all that, I mean, for that price. That's why, I mean, it's quite a bit more money than I anticipated while we talked about this at budget time.
Yeah, we spend quite a bit on having a contractor come in every year. And then also slow the, dragging the branches out to the cemetery before we come back and can continue with chipping. It slows down our tree trimming efforts, and with all of the trees, you know, as they mature and we have to keep them out for the snow plowing, we do a lot of, a lot of tree trimming. Jim, do you want to speak to that as well?
Yeah, as far as, as the city manager had said, my guys, we estimate it's between two and three times more productive with the wood chipper. I mean, they loved it. It is a big expense, and I understand that. But right, right now, we trim trees, throw them loose into the back of the dump truck, this 350, F-350, take them to the cemetery where we then pay to have them chipped. Whereas if we had a wood chipper, they just can keep moving down the road and get significantly more done in a day than they do now. And we end up, it's already chipped, so we don't have that expense of the chipping. So if you really look at the cost to that activity, it'd be a significant cost savings, even though the physical added cost to the city will be based on the chipping, if you will, because the guys are already in the payroll, but we'll save a significant amount in that activity.
And I trust you, I just asked.
Well, and I guess, I mean, I'll approve it, but I question how much, will the equipment outlast the investment? Like, when you take, it only costs us three grand a year to chip it, and it's costing us $47,000, whatever, almost $4,800 to purchase it. I mean, that's, will it outlast those years? I mean, I.
It will, for the amount that we'll use it, which is low on a scale compared to a tree company, we certainly won't use it nearly as much as they would. The equipment will last quite a long time, as long as we maintain it. So longer, we will get a return on that, just in the savings of paying somebody to chip it. We will get, we will save that ultimately.
So what's the life expectancy of this equipment? Is it greater than 20 years?
Yeah, I mean, something like that. We will, we will be able to keep that for more than 20 years.
Okay.
The other thing, it also makes it possible for us to do some of our own tree cutting, more than just trimming branches out of the right-of-way or, you know, sidewalk, whatever. We also now have the ability to go in and actually take some smaller, well, up to 12-inch trees down ourselves. Isn't that also a possibility, Jim?
Yeah, I guess to that extent, we would probably remove those trees now, but it's a lot of effort to haul them to the cemetery for them to be chipped. So we may tackle a tree that we would have avoided because of the cleanup related without a chipper. So there's.
Yeah, I would hope so, especially in the emergency situations when we have to call in a private contractor to come in and take care of some of these trees that have gone down and some of the bad weather we've had over the years. I would think this would do the job for us much better. Any other questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I think the labor savings is going to be, I don't know how significant it'll be, but I don't know, Jim, have you came up with any idea number-wise? Because you're saving the time of putting the loose branches and running it all, come back, run them back out, where you can probably do all your work in one trip this way.
Yeah, we could probably run all day and dump just the one time now if we had, when we had the box. That's what my guys estimate. Again, we think we'll get, based on what we've already done, it's between two and three times as productive. And it'll probably get more productive as we get more comfortable with the equipment.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is consideration of extension of grounds maintenance contract. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider extending the 2018 ground maintenance contract. Prior to 2018, our maintenance contracts were for only one year. In 2018, the city revised the bid documents to allow the contractor, the contract to be extended at the desire of the city. The, that allowed us to do the contract and then extend it twice. Since that time, we've been very comfortable with the contractor that currently has the city grounds maintenance contract. And administration, and in particular Jim, has discussed with them extending their prices. And we're recommending that we do a two-year additional, add two additional one-year extensions of the current contract.
Thank you. Jim, anything to add to this?
Just to reiterate that, this would be to extend it up to two years, but it's really one year at a time. Perform well, then we could extend it again one year.
Okay, and that's not going to take council action to extend it a second year, or will it?
If council approves it tonight, it would be to allow up to the two years.
Yeah, okay, alright. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend the 2018 grounds maintenance contract to Tommy's Lawn Service for calendar year 2021 with the expenses charged to the appropriate line items of the general fund, major street fund, local street fund, Tifa Fund, sanitary sewer fund, and water fund in the fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 21-22 budgets with an estimated amount of $12,624.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Discussion, question? Okay, so the way the motion reads, it says that it's for the calendar year 2021 for expenses and whatnot, but yet we go down towards the bottom, and it goes back to the question I was wondering. It says for 2021 and also 21-22. Should that motion read 20, for the year 2021 and 22? Or has it got to come back to council?
The way we were intending the motion is that you're giving administration the right to extend it, as long, it could say, and 21-22 budget if administration approves the work.
Yeah, and Emily, would you be comfortable with that? Okay, Jamie, you supported. Would you be comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Anything else? Be not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of approval of resolution number 2021-3, Ridge Street Overlay Project Signature Resolution. Mr. City Manager?
City Council, the city has received transportation improvement funding for the mill and overlay of Ridge Street. Construction is scheduled for the spring of 2021. Federal funds require that the project be administered through MDOT, and MDOT requires a resolution naming the two people authorized to sign the documents. And we essentially approved a very similar resolution for the Division Road project when we'd had the federal funds to resurface Division Road.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution 2021-3, designate the city manager and city clerk as individuals authorized to sign the contract between MDOT and the City of Richmond.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion on this item? And this is geared for the spring, summer?
Correct.
And have we planned any dates yet to let some of the inhabitants of Ridge Road know how we are going to maintain traffic? Has that been brought up yet?
We'll do this.
Pardon me?
We haven't picked dates yet, but just like all of our road projects, we, depending on whether we're allowed to gather, we will do a mailing like we did last year on the projects where we weren't able to gather, giving them who to contact with questions. Should the spring were allowed, be allowed to gather, we would actually hold a physical public information meeting, probably in March, in the community center. Again, it all depends on, if we're allowed to gather, we will hold those public information meetings. If we're not, we do a more detailed letter and make sure they know who to call with questions.
Okay, good, good. Anything else on this, council? Be not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Our final item, number six, is consideration of rescheduling the quarterly roundtable meeting day. Mr. City Manager?
Council is being asked to reschedule its next quarterly roundtable meeting. At a previous meeting, we had scheduled that meeting for tonight. However, with the extension of the MDHHS order that extended the prohibition on non-residential gatherings through the end of this month, administration has recommended that we reschedule this for sometime in February. It looks like they're hoping to lift the ban on the gatherings for like restaurants and things in February, so we'll keep our fingers crossed that they do that.
Thank you. Would council like to make a motion, or would you like to drop our rules and have an open discussion on when to have this meeting?
Let's drop our rules to have a discussion, please.
Do you agree? Okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, what about February 1st? Prior to, prior to and after, if necessary? Jamie?
Well, my own, I would love to, but I have this stinking suspicion it might get extended again, so I think we might be safer with the 15th.
Okay. Or we can go and say the 1st if she lifts it and go to the 15th, or either, whatever you'd like to do.
Because didn't, wasn't our last motion, though, the backup for the 1st?
No, it was for the 25th.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we thought she might let it go on the 15th.
Wow.
Yeah. Let me start it.
I'm good with the 1st and the backup at the 15th.
I'm good with the 1st.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good.
Alright. Well, if somebody wants to make a motion.
The 15th, as long as we have a backup, I'm great with it.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I think if we can make a motion to that, it'll be on the 1st. What time would you guys want to get together? What's good, 6?
6.
6?
Yes.
Yes.
So 6 o'clock and just a motion that will say 6 o'clock prior to our regular meeting, and then meet after our regular meeting if necessary?
Yep.
If, if available, we will do it on the 1st, if not, on the 15th. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Okay, alright, so we need a motion.
I'm making a motion to reschedule the special quarterly roundtable meeting of the city council on February 1st, 2021, at the city hall beginning at 6:00 PM, with a backup date of February 15th, at the same time as 6:00 PM.
Support.
It's been made and supported, very good. Any other discussion? And we should, shouldn't we, shouldn't she give her orders down the week of, the last week in January to let us?
Yes, I would anticipate that it'll probably be that like Wednesday, at least the last time it was the Wednesday prior to, you know, the order ending. So I would imagine it would be that, that week before.
Okay, okay. But we'll, we'll see how it goes. Anything else on this? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Move on to miscellaneous matters from the city manager. John?
Just two things real quick. One, wanted to thank DPW for their work with both the Christmas decorations this year. I know normally we handle that through volunteers, but the DPW did a good job with that and the tree. And also today, the DPW was able to get the ice rink installed and flood it. So hoping for some cold weather.
Yeah, well, it looks like we're going to get some cold weather at the end of the week. It's going down into the teens at night, so hopefully. Thank you. Moving on to council comments. Dennis?
Nothing tonight.
Emily?
Nothing, thank you.
Rob?
I'm good.
John?
Nothing.
Jamie?
Nothing, sir.
And Michael?
Nothing as well, thank you.
Okay. Go to the calendar here. Today being the 25th, we do have a Tifa meeting at 7:00. That will be on Zoom, virtual. Go to the city's website to figure out how to get on there. Also, the next regular council meeting, as you just heard, is at 7:00. It's possibly at city hall, depending on if restrictions are lifted from the COVID. We will be meeting at the same location, city hall, at 6:00 to start our quarterly workshop meeting again if the COVID rules are lifted. The 11th will be the next planning commission meeting. And our calendar does show a chili cook-off. I believe that's also been canceled, John?
Correct.
Yeah, for the 6th, that has been canceled. And while I'm looking at it, we have a great calendar, city calendar, that we try to improve every year. There's more events on here than we've had before, but it's a great calendar that you can obtain from the city by asking. There is no charge. There is no charge for that calendar, but it's got a lot of good things on it.
And with everything going on, Mr. Mayor, we have been leaving copies of that calendar on the counter here at City Hall, so any time of the day, if you just stop in, there's calendars available on the, on the City Hall calendar, even when we're closed.
Very good, very good.
There, there is also an EDC meeting Thursday, the 21st, at 7:00 PM via Zoom as well.
And that is... Did I run right over top of that? I did, Jamie? Absolutely. The 21st at 7:00 on Zoom. Okay. Not this week yet. I thought I had circled everything, and I did not. Okay, but that takes care of our calendar for us. We move on. There is no closed session this evening. Is there any other business of the City Council this evening? If not, motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us this evening.